Welcome. This is the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals. It is being held via Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees are advised that their image, voice, and telephone number may be recorded for the record. I'll call the meeting to order at seven oh five. Let me introduce the members of the board. As I call your name, please raise your hand and say present. Jim Royer.
Present.
Denny Bartlett.
Present.
Susanna Roberts.
Present.
Ginny Zakatinsky.
Present.
Keith Suzie.
Present.
I'm Lynn Ryan. And we have with us Leanne Leahy, Administrative Assistant for Inspection and Land Use Boards.
Present.
Okay, I'll Leanne has told me that she has received the paperwork that she needs for notifications. So I think we can proceed. I'll open the hearing for a per- a special permit in variance for detached accessory apartment at fifty-two Dudley Road. Now, have you as yet promoted?
Yes.
Petitioner.
Yes, she's now on the panel.
Ms. Baff, you did receive copy of chapter forty A, section ten, and saw what we have to find in order to grant a variance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we usually ask the petitioner to share with us what they're planning to do. And then there'll be questions from the board.
Sure. Um, we have a garage. We're building a, I guess it would be called an accessory apartment or an in-law apartment in our garage, which is detached from the house. The garage, so the the residence, the residence square footage is eighteen fifty-two. Above the garage is a bonus room. When it was built, it was called a game room. And that square footage is additional five hundred and twelve square feet. At this time, Richard wasn't including that space as part of the total residential square footage, but he said to review it with you. So we need a variance for the extra one hundred and twenty square feet if the bonus room was not included in the square footage of the residence.
Right. And according to the assessors' records that we received, they didn't include it either.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, this was built probably eighty-nine, ninety, maybe. The building inspector at the time was, what was his name?
Well, the garage.
Larry Grant.
Larry. Yes, it was Larry. Thanks.
The garage is, was actually constructed in two thousand.
Oh.
According to the assessors' records.
Mm-hmm.
And it replaced
An existing building, yeah.
A barn that was there.
Yep.
It was in the same footprint.
Correct.
So we would have to, you know, say that we feel that it was basically the same structure. But anyway, continue, please.
Um, so we've looked at, over the years, my son, we're, what we're looking to do is my husband and I will move into the accessory apartment. It'd be a one-bedroom, living room, kitchen, one-bedroom. Um, one floor, the basement of the, the floor of the garage. Um, and my son would then take over the house. And this would allow us to continue living in in our home at the time when we retire in a couple more years. And we've talked to all the neighbors in the neighborhood. They're all in, don't have a problem with it. The garage, um, well, I should say, we talked to the neighbors on the River Road side of Dudley Road. The other side of Dudley Road is within three hundred feet of our lot line, but it's pretty far away. We don't, they stay up, it, it, there's a dirt road that connects the two sides. So it's not like a pass-through road that you drive through. So we don't really know the neighbors up on the top of the hill. But the neighbors on the River Road side of Dudley, we've spoken to all of them and they're in in agreement with, and not having a problem with us doing this in the neighborhood.
Okay. And why do you feel you need to exceed the thirty-five square feet? The thirty-five percentage?
The, the square, the floor space of the garage, the one floor, is twenty-four by thirty-two. In order to decrease it to, to remain within the thirty-five square, or the thirty-five percent, what we'd end up having to do is build a wall in basically dead space and area of the, the room. And we've talked to a couple, we've talked to a firefighter that we're friends with and he retired firefighter from Hudson, who said that he didn't think it would be something that should be agreed to because of the, the risk of fire, of not having access to that space. It'd be just basically a dead an area that, you know, with a wall with nothing on the other side, except for electrical on the wall, on that wall, the inside of the in-law apartment. So because of that, and it was, it's just difficult to, to change the square footage of a, of a footprint that's already, already in existence. That would be the, the reason why would we like to ask for the variance.
Could you address section ten of, um, chapter seventy, uh, chapter forty A? Maybe I could be a little helpful.
Yeah.
The section on variances allows us to grant dimensional variances, which this there is some question as to whether it's a use or dimensional variance, but if we take it as a dimensional variance.
Mm-hmm.
We have to find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellate. And the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance or bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
I need to tell you that I have been on the ZBA for quite a long time. And we have issued many permits for in-law apartments and accessory apartments and detached apartments. We have never, ever varied from the thirty-five percent.
So here, a couple, so a little bit of background. We came, my son and I came to the ZBA, and I can't really tell you when, you may have been on there. At the time, Tim Wheeler was a member of the ZBA. If that gives you any idea of how long ago it was, maybe five years, six years?
I've been on the board for forty.
Okay, was Tim Wheeler on the board at one point?
He would be the planning board.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. So we went to the planning boards, and they must have met on Wednesday nights at the time, too. And to see if we could, we own seven and a half acres of land. We went to the planning board to ask them if we could subdivide our lot out back and give my son two acres, so he could build a house and remain in town. And because of the shape of the land and the, the ability of not being able to have the one hundred feet of frontage or a, a road to go to the back of my property, we were unable to do that. At that time, we were told that we, it was potentially, we could potentially build an apartment in the garage as it stood today. When we bought our house in nineteen eighty-eight, our house was a two-family. The house, who does now for us is also a two-family. We converted our house back to one family as our family grew. And actually had to go down to town hall and have, and have the assessor change it back to one family because even though it was a one-family for a period of time, the assessor's documents didn't say that. I know that doesn't really answer your question. Um, but our house is fairly small. It's eighteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. Doing thirty-five square feet brings us down to see six hundred and forty-eight square feet for the go, for the in-law apartment. With the, with the garage, with the second floor of the garage, that brings us up to eight hundred and twenty-seven square, or two thousand three hundred and sixty-four, which would make it eight hundred and twenty-seven square feet for the thirty-five percent. With the space that we're asking to, for the variance, it would be seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet, which isn't really a large space in today's standards. And a hundred and twenty square feet bigger than what we have today. And, and because of that, we'd like to have the variance.
But again, you need to address what we need to find.
Well, the three, what I understood was the request would not pose a substantial detriment to the public, and the request does not go against the purpose of the ordinance, right?
No, I think the piece that we're interested in is that finds that owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land.
Right.
Or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
In which it is located, a literal enforcement. And then it goes on to say would be a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise.
So.
Uh, we need something about the soil condition, shape or topography that is soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting your land, but basically not your neighbors.
So, I mean, if you're talking literally the land itself, we're not making any changes to the land. Because it's an existing building. To to deviate from the building, what you're, what we would have to do is build a wall. The building is, say, thirty-two wide by twenty-four deep. We would have to build a wall five feet out on the side, twenty-four feet down, and make basically a dead zone in order to create that, to stay within the thirty-five percent. And I would feel that that is a hardship on our part. It would be, it would be a concern to me for a fire where you've got space that is has no exit, no entrance into. If there was a fire behind that wall, we wouldn't know it until quite some time. We couldn't put a smoke detector in that area because it's, it's basically blocked off.
I'll open it up to my colleagues.
Um, yeah, I have a question. Why are you blocking it off? Why aren't you using it for storage for the main house? Uh, you, we're talking either five feet by twenty-four, which is fairly wide, but oddly shaped, that could be accessed from the exterior with doors for exterior storage, or you're looking at a ten-foot by twelve-foot room, which is a good-sized room, which also could be storage accessed from the outside. So I'm not understanding why you need it to be dead space.
Because it was my understanding that we wouldn't be able to access, access that from anywhere, from the apart, from the in-law apartment or the outside.
Well, if that's the case, then you wouldn't also be able to access the second floor, which could be considered part of your detached accessory unit.
Right, the, the second floor is, is accessible from external only. There's no internal connection to the second floor from the downstairs.
Okay, so explain to me why you can't make a space that is a hundred and twenty square feet that is accessible from the exterior.
I just, the way I read it, I, maybe I misunderstood, but the way I read it, it wasn't allowed.
Yeah, um, Mr. Hanks is on in, in the audience. Maybe he could jump in and tell us if that is allowed. I think that would make a big difference for everybody.
Would you like me to promote him, Lynn?
If he's willing.
I think he's probably willing.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I don't see why, um, as Susanna said, it'd be no different than the storage space above the garage. It's just that it can't be part of the accessory apartment. So if it's external storage space, access me outside. I don't see why that would be an issue under the bylaw. That'd be no different than, we don't include garages or basement spaces towards the equation of the square footage.
Hey, Richard, does, um, this is Judy, doesn't, does the mechanical area, is that included as part of the space? Living space?
Um, short of me looking up the bylaw, the, under definition, which I can try and do, if you want to keep going, I'll, I'll pull it up on a separate device.
Because we have no basement, so the mechanical room is going to be in the in the in-law space.
Right.
But is it the, it is the mechanical space for the in-law apartment?
Right, it'll have, it'll have the water, the water tank, the water heater, the heating system.
I don't think that has to be included in the square footage.
Well, I think it does, because if you have, if you have a house, it's included in the square footage when you buy the house.
Well, if it's in your basement, it isn't. If you have an unfinished basement, right?
Well, what if your house is on a slab?
Which, which is what she has.
Right, which is what we have today.
So it's, the assessors consider it part of your house, so I would say that the utilities, utility room for the apartment would be included in the living space.
Mm-hmm.
So that means that where our furnace is in this house now was never included in the, in our actual living space here. So we had, we need to add that, which will bring the eighteen, not it up to over two thousand, right?
Do.
Because what I could, I only did living space, which I believe living space is, you can eat in it, sleep in it, or watch TV, and that's considered living space. Closet's on, bathroom's on.
Uh, the square footage listed on the assessor's map is not living space. It should be, it should be based upon the exterior dimensions of the building. Then you subtract out from there for things like staircases where you don't have two floors or whatever. But it's not. Um, they, they, we're back in the day, they used to, you know, not include hallways, and they didn't include bathrooms, square footage and and closet spaces and things like that, but that's long gone. They've changed the standard for how they measure the interior space. And it's been that standard has been in, uh, gone now for almost thirty years.
Right, well, I think that this is um, a Mr. Hanks issue. Mr. Hanks has to determine what the square footage is. And they're coming for variance because it was concluded by Mr. Hanks that the square footage of the accessory apartment exceeded the thirty-five percent. So I don't think it's really up to us to determine what the square footage of the accessory apartment is or what the square footage of the house is. I think that rests in the hands of the building inspector.
I, I, I came up with that number based on them giving me the dimensions, the overall dimensions of their house and the overall dimension of the apartment. So I did the calculations based on, on the plans that they provided to me.
Do you know what the calculation was, what the square footage you used for the house and for the apartment?
It's in the letter.
Yeah, I, I pretty much spelled out everything in, within my letter to them.
Okay.
So the letter says eighteen hundred and fifty-two square foot for the house.
Which matches what it says on the assessor's card.
Right, which has been the same since at least nineteen eighty-eight when we bought it.
Well, you, you, you did a couple of additions on to that.
No, no, we've never done addition. We, we, everything that we did was same square, like we had, we did the kitchen a few years ago, Richard, in two thousand and nineteen, but it was the same square footage of what was there. We didn't.
I'm sorry, I, I just remember you did the kitchen, but that was the same square footage.
Yeah, we didn't change anything.
Okay. So, so by, by definition, floor area is the sum of horizontal areas of each floor of a building measured from the interior faces of the exterior walls or from the centerline of any common wall separating two buildings. The floor area measurement is exclusive of the areas of unfinished basements, unfinished attics, attached garages or spaces used for off-street parking or loading, breezeways, enclosed or unenclosed quarters, elevator or stair bulkheads, and any accessory structures. So I guess back to Suzanne's point, if that was storage from the exterior, that would be a accessory structure, like a garage would be a accessory structure.
Since the, so since the garage was built with the bonus room above it, we can't get that space included as part of the square footage. We used it, I mean, there's a TV up there, there's furniture up there, there's, there was, um, you know, a foosball table up there when my kids were younger.
Was there ever a building permit requested to finish that upper level?
Yes.
Yes. It was actually part of the
It was part of the deal.
The original, the original one.
Inspected every, everything up there.
Yeah. So Larry did the inspections. We had to, because the downstairs of the garage was a garage space, he had us sheet rocket insulated everything to keep the, you know, because of the garage being the basement and the room being above it. So we had to go by the, the building inspection rules to make that space livable um, for, for, you know, using with the garage underneath it.
So that, that, Lynn, that was a gray area that I came up with, and I wasn't really sure how to count that. But if I take the, the literal read of the, uh, bylaws, it says the square footage of the dwelling unit.
Right.
So that's, that's where I got a little into the gray area, you know, what, what, what would you really count that space of? Uh, they, they don't intend to use that as part of the accessory apartment?
No.
Um, so that, that's what they've, they're saying, that they don't intend to use that because you can't access it from the inside.
What year was this uh, bonus room done?
Um, I guess they, I, I, I thought it was early nineties, but they said it was year two thousand.
No, that's when the garage was built.
Right, well, that would be when the bonus room was built also. It was all, it's in the same structure.
Well, it's not mentioned in the assessors' records.
Yeah, that, I was looking for it, yeah.
I mean, I can show it to you if you want. It's been there since day one.
Well, I and I'm willing to hear everyone else's opinion on this, but my opinion is that we need to go by what it says on the assessors, if.
Even though the assessors' map could, the assessors could be wrong. I mean, they've never.
Well, I would think they would have to. Hold on, please.
Sure.
Um, I would think if you want it to be included, you would need to have the assessors come out and update and show it, because we need to go by what's on the assessors' card.
I, yeah, that, that would be fair enough. I would agree to that.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm coming to is we first need to know, and I need to ask my colleagues, do you think we meet the criteria in chapter forty A, section ten for a variance?
For the, for the size of the unit?
Yes.
Uh, I vote no.
Well, okay, you don't think we do.
No, I, I know, yeah, no, I mean, there's, it's just, it's not a hardship. It's just, it's not. It's a convenience.
Jenny, what do you feel?
Well. I think there's a lot of other ways around.
All right, you're gonna have to speak up, son.
What's that? Oh, you know, there's a dog drinking water on somebody.
Oh, it's my dozer. Dozer, you're awfully loud.
It's always dozer. Um, so we probably would need a variance if, if Hank, um, I mean, Mr. Hanks, if, if she did uh, get the assessor out there, would that work for you, um, Richard? So we, we wouldn't even need a variance at that point. If the assessor came out and changed the square footage, would you agree it meets your criteria?
Well, the, the, the part that I had an issue with is is, is the, the little read of the bylaws says that you take thirty-five percent of the floor of the, um, of the area of, of the dwelling unit. So I guess what I'd be looking for the ZBA determination, would you say that that's part of the dwelling unit square footage? And if that's the case, then we're golden. But I, I, I couldn't get there.
In all, in all fairness, Rich, okay? I think the determination of what the square footage is of both the accessory apartment and the living space in the main house um, is pretty much in your court. I think what I'm looking to see is whether or not the folks want to entertain some kind of a variance given what is presented before us right now. That doesn't mean that we can't approve the special permit. If we were to deny the variance, it would mean we would limit it to thirty-five percent. And it would be up to the petitioner or, and yourself to, um, either modify the plans or, um, get the living space changed. So folks, do you, I, we've heard from Susanna. Jenny, do you think the criteria in section ten is being met by this petition?
No.
Okay. Um, Jenny?
Uh, no, I do not.
All right, Jim?
No, I have to, uh, agree with Susanna there. I don't think there's a hardship here. I, I understand that the petitioner wants to do this. And I, I just don't see how it qualifies as a hardship, though.
Kate?
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stand separate from you guys. I, I don't see any reason to make someone build a wall just so he can feel good about, you know, the ten by ten. This is a the two structures that have been in existence for a long time. It's not like the developer just built something. Um, we're, you know, and we're talking about family that's going to be here in town. There's many other boards that are trying to keep families in town. Just seems kind of silly that we couldn't do something here. So no, I'm, I'm gonna stand back on this one.
Okay, so you're saying, no, you would vote to authorize the variance?
I mean, I guess that's what the exceptions are for. I do feel like, uh, Mr. Hanks probably could figure a way around this for the square footage and/or to put in a room. So I guess I see there's lots of options to make this go forward. I guess without the variance. Um, but not, I, yeah.
I'm, I'm confused. So your answer is you think we should grant a variance? That we've met the criteria?
If that's the only option, then I would say, sure, I would grant a variance. So if you're, if there's no other options and that, that is all there is, then I would do a variance personally.
You feel we've met the criteria in section ten?
I'll go back and look at it closely again. I don't see why, I respect this board and I respect this board's opinions. Um, so I'm gonna go back and look at it, but what I looked at before this meeting, I didn't, I, it really comes down to what a hardship is and what's the point of forcing that on to our neighbors.
Well, it has to do with the topography, et cetera, and the uniqueness of the lot in the neighborhood is the portion that I have difficulty getting by.
But with, it's with. But with, with this is an existing building. I guess I'm getting stuck on what the the soil and the topology of the lot has to do with an existing building.
Most variances of a side lot, front lot, rear lot. And the topography would be if you have a lot of land, but most of it is under conservation or wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
If um you, because of the um infrastructure, whether it be the well or the septic tank, you have to put something in a position you might not otherwise have to put.
Right, we did that with our septic design that we've gotten for this for this um variance, for for this zoning issue.
For this
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've already gotten our our septic tests, our septic plan and our permit and our well plan and permit.
Yes, we see that the Board of Health has approved it. Mr. Brooks Brookings um uh sent forward a a a letter.
Right.
But I want to give Keith a chance to um recheck section ten so that he's comfortable in his decision. Um, does anyone else have any other questions?
Uh, may may I say say something, Lynn?
Yes, Jim, sure.
No, this is Richard, but um
Oh.
So 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 on the on the section ten, it does talk about the property shape, soils and stuff like that, but also mentions a little bit about structures. Could you would you take a second and read that quote about structures to me?
Oh, okay, it says especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A little, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance or bylaw.
So i- it 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 does mention structures, so would would I I I see where everybody else is coming from.
I think a hundred twenty square feet by external s- storage areas like that, but is is that kind of unreasonable to have the applicant have to, you know, diminish the size of?
But it has to do with especially affecting such land or structures and it's got relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land.
Or structures, right?
I'm sorry?
Um
Or 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 structures.
Or structures.
Of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. So we would have to find that owing to circumstances relating to the structure, not the use, but the structure.
Right. And so substantial hardship, financial or otherwise.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. So if you watched on Fox twenty-five News today, there was a um big discussion about Marah Healy's Affordable Homes Act, which would allow accessory dwellings up to nine hundred square feet as a as a right. I know that towns can reduce or or enhance the zoning to their, you know, for what they'd like. And I understand, you know, I've lived in Berlin thirty, forty something years. My daughter's forty, gonna be forty-two, so forty years now. And I understand the, you know, the need for two-acre minimums and, you know, frontage, you know, a hundred feet of frontage for roads, and I understand all that, but we're a long-term family that's been in this town for, you know, forty years and we're asking to build something in an existing structure that isn't gonna harm anybody in the neighborhood or anybody else in the town for that matter. Um, senior housing is, is, there's also a Berlin Housing Partnership that is looking at similar things for, you know, for auxiliary structures such as this. Um, our house was a two-family in the past. We pulled a perm, a permit to change it to one family and it did the right thing. Their house two doors down from us is currently a two-family. On the other side of the road is Mark Rose's condos. So and the neighborhood agrees with us that it shouldn't be in it, that they're not disagreeing that we should not be able to do this. I understand the the zoning laws, but variances, you know, it's a variance request.
I I just feel this is gonna open the floodgates for everyone because um you someone else is gonna come in and have a three-car garage and ask why they don't have to you know, you've got your variance, why can't they have a variance to fill up the whole three-car garage with a detached accessory unit? A- and I know how much we've had to argue to stick with this thirty-five percent. Um without, you know, without belaboring the point. There are options if and and uh, you know, if if Rich Hanks wants to give his input on it. If the bonus room was considered part of the primary dwelling unit, this would take care of most of the problem, all of it, actually.
Yeah, this would be a moot point.
So if that's something that Rich is willing to consider, then I would probably suggest maybe that the board continue this to get a new assessors um official square footage and then go from there. But that's just me, so I would like to hear what everyone else says.
I have a history question. The old cement house that was on that property are down?
Yep.
That's been torn down?
Correct.
Is that on your property?
Partially.
Okay.
What's your, what's your thinking with that, Jenny?
Well, there's something there once upon a time. And I don't know how much is left of it. I know that it was
Nothing, you guys took it all down. The part that I should say, Jenny, the part that was partially on our property is completely gone. The other building, there is um, I don't even know what it is. What's that thing underneath, Tom? The the old house down there with the the
They took it all except that they buried the concrete.
Oh, the concrete was buried. So there's nothing there of that property, property either.
Judy, was was there two houses when you on that property when you bought it?
No, well, yeah. There was an abandoned property that we took care of. Um it was a a building, a cement building that they were using as a house and another building that had collapsed on itself. Um, and the town came in and tore both down.
What what was it? A hundred, hundred percent on your property?
No, one of them was partially on our property.
Only partially?
Yeah.
So it's like, I have another question for you. How how far away is this garage to the house?
How far away is the garage to the house?
Say one fifty?
Hundred fifty?
That far?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So an interesting thing that I found in the bylaw, which um if if it was attached, which a hundred fifty feet, that's not gonna work for you, but uh just for ZBA's benefit is that if if was a, if you go for an in-law that's attached, you take the square footage of the house and the apartment add together, take thirty-five percent. But for some reason, the accessory dwelling, the detached accessory dwelling is just just thirty-five percent of the uh principal residence. So I thought that was a an odd twist that one method is calculated one way and the other one's calculated a different way.
Well, while well, while I appreciate um Suzanne has thought that we could continue this till next month, I just look to be what the outcome. Um if we continue this for a month, they're either gonna come back and say, yes, we've got the um third floor or attic or whatever is now deemed um property, uh part of the living space and therefore um we're within the thirty-five percent. Or they're gonna come back and say, no, the um assessors don't consider it living space. So in either event, it's really not gonna change the thirty-five percent outcome in the long run.
Oh. Why? If the if the assessor says that that space above the garage is living space, that would increase the the total square footage.
And you wouldn't need a variance?
Need the variance, correct.
Right. But what I'm saying is if we continue the hearing and the variance, the special permit and variance.
Yep.
So that we can see if the assessors are going to increase the living space.
Mm-hmm.
It would not change um the board's decision in any way because it would still mean that the space would be within the thirty-five percent. So in any way, the variance would then go away.
So but that would be up to Richard whether he believes under the zoning, under the variance, under the law, it includes that. We could include that, our face.
I would say it would be the assessors have to claim that it's living space.
Okay.
Well, it's 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 gonna get in into again, how 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 are we interpreting five twenty-three point one, and it reads the apartment shall not comprise more than thirty-five percent of the existing dwellings total floor area.
Right.
So I'm gonna cautiously say this and um yeah, I'm gonna go back to Susanna's example, so if we count that, then what would prevent the next person come that come along and have a three or four bay garage and you know, thinking ahead, saying, well, I I need to finish my upstairs of this and so I can count it towards my great big apartment later on down the road. I
Well, I I think because the you're saying it um it's grandfathered. It was built before the deadline, and that's why it can be a detached accessory apartment.
Well, there there really isn't a deadline. Um, so if you really read into the requirements of a detached accessory apartment, there there is language about, talking about um, an accessory apartment or a structure that was prior to January first nineteen ninety. But then as you get into it, and I I tried to really explain out my letter just because it was really convoluted for me to figure it out. And I hope I figured it out. That there are exceptions to other buildings. It it doesn't say that I can't create a new detached accessory building. There are certain exceptions to the ones that were prior to nineteen, January one of nineteen ninety. So under five two four point three, it says the use of any detached accessory apartment other than one in existence on January one nineteen ninety and whose creation is consistent with section five two four point two, which basically says I certify that the building can be converted to a to a dwelling unit. Um, it's it should be limited to A, housing for a group of not more than four residents, at least one of whom is related by blood or marriage. That's them. That's their case right here. Um, B, housing for caregivers, at least one resident of the principal dwelling. Or C, as a rental housing rented subject to conditions as may be required from time to time to qualify as a detached uh accessory structure as a unit of affordable housing. So so they they a- again, the the building didn't have to be there prior to nineteen ninety. But the the buildings from nineteen, prior to nineteen ninety, I don't think the size limitation was there. They they were they were in existence. So there were, there's some my read is that it doesn't have to be a building existing prior to nineteen ninety. It's just that there this you can converse something as long as you meet the requirements of five two four point three, which is what they're doing other than they're more than the thirty-five percent. But again, they 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 kind of got a footprint that's there now. So it really comes down to I was hoping for, and Lynn kind of kicked it back to me. I was kind of hoping that the ZBA would look at five two three point one, which says the apartment shall not comprise more than thirty-five percent of the existing dwellings total floor area. So is the ZBA willing to say that that room above which the graphs are saying was always been used for a play area for, as part of the dwelling? Are we are we counting that? And if we are, then they don't need a variance. They only need the special permit for the detached accessory structure.
Rich, in all fairness, I don't think we can make that determination. I think the ultimate one to determine it would be yourself and you are rightfully doing it from assessors records.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I I would love to be able to say that, Rich, but I've I've never seen the building. I, you know, I have no idea what that you know, what that uh area i- is or how how you access it or anything else, so.
Wasn't it built after two thousand? Wasn't that brought up earlier?
The garage, yeah, the the barn that was there, we built, we made the garage on the same footprint. So it could be considered a what do they call it? Not new
By as on the same footprint. I think by a stretch of the imagination because there was a structure there.
Yep.
Um, in nineteen ninety. And, you know, we can just assume that it was um I mean, it's, it again, it's up to you folks, but I I think we can assume that what was done in two thousand was just a replacement.
Yeah, it was.
But technically, according to the bylaw, that structure was not there in nineteen ninety.
Right, but we do have a non-conforming structure that if it was, if it needed to be rebuilt, they had twelve months to rebuild it to keep the non-conforming. So I would my interpretation is that it is, it it keeps its its grandfathered date.
That was pretty much mine, but it's up to the board, not me.
Well, I would just note that the assessors document lists the garage as a garage renovation not a new building.
New. Hmm.
Hmm.
Good point, Jim.
Jim's up on details.
We could um theoretically um and disregard the um
Nineteen ninety?
Took five twenty-four, three, and we could go into the five twenty-four, one um and just say the structure was in existence as of one January nineteen ninety. It's been renovated since then, but there we could say there was a structure there. And um then you would avoid uh the issues of well, you still that doesn't avoid the thirty-five percent, though, does it?
Well, that's, that's where I was trying to ask um Rich, if the assessors changed the the total living area number on their card, would that change his interpretation of what the total living area is?
Who will include the uh the space over the garage as part of the dwelling unit?
Yes.
I mean, I don't think we we can tell Rich how to do his job. I I think you can include that space now with or without the assessors. That's sort of been what you've been doing in going by for your your own guideline, but that I think you have flexibility there, or am I wrong in that, Rich?
I'm sorry, I was reading. Uh, I I I really apologize for that. Go ahead. Let's say that again.
No, that's okay. I mean, that's sort of your guideline because the the there is some gray area here, right? And so that's the guideline that you've sort of built for yourself is to go by the assessors square footage. But in a, in this specific example, this space is something that could be used towards your calculations. Or am I taking a big leap there?
So I'd have to think on that, and I'm 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 a little cautious on that only to the point of Um, setting a precedence that would tend to have someone else. With the vision of doing a a similar uh detached. A year or two off and say, well, I'm gonna finish the upstairs of this garage, this detached garage. Um, put put some pool tables up there and a little minibar and everything else, and then later on I can count that as my square footage, so I can have a. Three or four thousand square foot accessory apartment downstairs later. I'm just cautious on that, I I don't wanna.
I believe historically. That we have gone on the assessors' records. And they're not listing.
They're not listening.
Attic space as um living space.
So. I I've been saying that I believe that. Structures in existence prior to January one of nineteen ninety have some special privileges, and I think one of those privileges would be. That they're not bound to the thirty-five percent. And if that's the case, if 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 everybody feels that. You know, they they were rebuilding or enhancing an existing structure that was pre nineteen ninety. I think the thirty-five percent would go away.
How do you think that, Rich?
Well, because the 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 bylaw keeps mentioning that. Um, by special, well, as example, uh. By special permit from the Board of Appeals and subject to requirements of five two two, well, is that gonna kick me back to thirty-five percent? Let me see. No, five two three, so let me let me start again, oh, and five two three, yeah, so it still kicks you back to the thirty-five percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because you have to meet the criteria in five two two and five two three.
Right, right.
Does anybody have any questions about the floor plan or anything else?
Well, I'm a little confused about the packages that we were given. Um, there's two different drawings that are labeled first floor and two different drawings that are labeled second floor, so I'm not. Really sure which which.
That's that's our house, that's not the garage.
Right, the the. What I gave you was because Richard was had us give you the or had us. Provide the layout of the existing house, the first and second floor of the existing house.
Okay.
That's one, and then there's the the drawing for the garage.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
And also, in because I had to figure this one out, was that. There's existing area to be living area, which is what they have right now. And then the other one which shows what it's going to be, and I thought it, because I'm like. At first I thought it was two floors, and then I realized one was existing and one was proposed.
Right, the the. The one that shows the second story is sixteen by twenty-four. That's the upstairs of the existing garage, where what we call the bonus room.
Right, but I was looking at what what I got confused with was. The page that is titled existing area to be living area.
Right, that's the downstairs of the garage, right, that we were going to.
Gonna become the detached apartment.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of my concerns is. When I did the math on the the um square footages that were given. Um, this. Accessory apartment comes out to somewhere just north of forty percent. Of the existing living space. And.
Without the bonus room, right?
Without the bonus room. But I'm talking variance now.
Correct, okay.
And I'm saying someone comes in and they have forty-five percent, and then somebody comes in and they have fifty percent. And then someone comes in and has sixty percent.
So if you have somebody that has a four thousand square foot house, right? Their accessory apartment can be somewhere in the vicinity of twelve or thirteen hundred square feet, right?
I think we have an upper maximum on the size. Or we have.
Yeah.
That might have been a proposal, because the house is getting bigger.
The state's plan, the Massachusetts state's plan is a nine hundred square foot. Maximum, that's the the one that Martha, I mean Martha Coakley, oh boy, I just blasted myself. Maury Healy.
Maury Healy.
Trying to do, yes. Wow.
But that's my concern, folks. You know, once you go over the thirty-five percent. Unless there is true justification for it, which. I don't, I can't bring myself to find in section ten of Foddy A. Where does it end?
So so I I I have a question for Mr. Mrs. Graff, so. Uh, I I I know you said that in the next couple of years, you're planning to retire and stuff like that, and I'm just tossing this out there, so. Again, if I go back to definition of an in-law, it's it's we we take thirty-five percent of the. Uh, the dwelling and the apartment and to combine, you take thirty-five percent of those two together. Would it be worth having a planning board look at this bylaw and see if they want to change that formula as well, that? The detached accessory would be the combined total as well? But that would be having to go to a town meeting to have it changed.
Wouldn't that open up more floodgates, I I what I what I don't have a handle on, and I do respect both of your opinions, Sue and and. And Rich, you have a better grasp of. How many possibilities that this is opening up? I you know, and I and Lynn, I truly appreciate, you know, just sticking to a rock solid number. But that's what variance is about, you know, what I'm seeing here is that this is a family that's been here for, you know, forty years. And it's a property that had multiple dwell dwellings on it at one time, and it's pre-existing foundations, it's. It just seems to me that the the number of possibilities of this um happening again. Are 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 more rare in my mind than it sounds like it is in your mind. I mean, I you know, I totally get, we don't want a new developer, um, you know, putting in rooms above their new garages. But that's not what we're talking about here, um.
But none of the criteria you're mentioning meet section ten, okay? Um, I think.
Well, it's a reasonable hardship, it's not like she planned the garage to do this. Or or the extra structure, this was already pre-existing. So, yeah, this was new plans and a new design, it would make sense that she stays within a certain um square footage. But it was already there, so now what we're talking about is to put in a wall. I I think that is reasonable to say that that's financial hardship, um, for something that's. Doesn't affect the community, doesn't affect the town, doesn't really affect the bylaw, i- it is a variance, I guess in my mind, that's where I'm I'm struggling with.
So let's say I have a barn that's five thousand square feet. And I have a twenty uh twelve hundred square foot house. And I want to put an apartment in the barn. Does that mean I could go to forty percent or fifty percent?
We could keep just throwing numbers around, but none of this is real. I mean, we don't have people with barns asking to do that.
And and and. We'd also looked at alternative solutions over the last, you know, five, seven years, where, you know. We weren't gonna get approval to put to break off a house lot because we didn't have the frontage, we couldn't add. An in-law apartment to the existing house, because. The 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 neighborhood's very dense, okay, the lot line to the to the right of the house is um. Thirty feet, then the lot line, then our well in our septic are behind that, so we couldn't go back from that way, we can't go back on the other side because. We're way too close to the neighbor's house on that side. So it was, we've looked at other alternatives to to make this happen, and this was the best solution, and. And we thought it was. Well, obviously, since we already paid for, you know, a well designed, you know, well in a septic design, we thought this was not gonna be the easier part. Not having, you know, the building permit, we didn't realize at the time. What it was gonna feel.
Lynn Lynn, would 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 that help you on the um. Shape and size of topography with that, they 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 don't have the ability to add an in-law, attach in-law, which would. They could meet the requirement of the combined house and in-law that was attached.
I don't see how it could, because what they've asked for is a detached one.
Okay.
But I'm only one person here.
I I was just angling. She just brought up is that, and they don't have the ability to do it on an attached in-law, which would allow them to get to the square footage that they're trying to achieve.
Right.
So they're trying to do it in it as a detached, well, they they accept that they're over by um a ten by twelve room.
But they'd still be stuck with the same square footage.
Well, if if they if they could add on to their existing dwelling. With an in-law, they they could take that square footage that they're trying to achieve now with the detached, they could add that to their. Existing dwelling, where you add the two together, they they would be within the limit. But because of because of the topography and and the existing location of the house, they don't have the ability to add an in-law, is what she just said.
Well, I, but my problem now is that with detached accessory, it's. An existing it grandfathered building.
Okay.
And and that's why we're, that's why they're generally allowed, is because they're pre-existing, and well. They're of a certain date, whereas an in-law apartment. The date doesn't matter, and I think that's why the difference is coming in, because if, for example, my barn. I could put. A rather large. Apartment up there, I mean, it's it's big. And that's a two hundred year old barn, so. It's, you know, and it's way too far away for me to make it attached, so. It makes sense that it's only thirty-five percent of the actual house. Because it's detached, because it's it not, it doesn't exist as. Living space, whereas where you're making it. And say a new house with an in-law, it's all living space to start with, so it's all, it all gets included, so it makes sense to me. That's why there's a difference in the definitions. I don't, I probably did not explain that well at all.
No, I I I grasp it, and 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 to your point, using your your existing barn as an example, there's. Um, like you said. Be- based on the square footage of your house and everything else, you you. You would have the abilities, well, if you would have finished the the second floor as living space of your existing dwelling. You could have a very large apartment on the first floor.
But even thirty-five percent would be a very large apartment, so. You know, they still have to come through here, they still have to go through us for the variance, and you know. Maybe it wouldn't be bad if you did that for your mom and gave her a really nice apartment, thirty thirty-five percent of your barn would be great. Like, I don't know, I feel like that's the point of the variance. And I hear your points, Sue, I I don't, you you guys all know me, I I don't want to open the floodgates either. Um, so I don't know, you guys have the votes without me, you don't need my vote.
It's it's harder with a small house, older houses generally tend to be smaller than the newer houses. And it puts a constraint on the thirty-five percent. And and I totally understand where you're coming from, because. Houses used to be a lot smaller, and that thirty-five percent was based on, you know, an average house size. And maybe it should be, you know, steps, like a house under. Two thousand square feet should be allowed to be forty percent, and a house over two thousand square feet needs to stay with the thirty-five. And there has, maybe there has to be a cap on it, but. You know, maybe we should look at this going forward, um, you know, with, you know, revising the town bylaws. But I think right now, I um, I mean, my. Idea would be to continue it until we can hear back. From assessors if that was gonna make a difference to everybody involved, if. You could feel better about it, knowing that the bonus room could be included.
And if it can't.
Let's worry about that when we get there, if it can, then we don't have to have this conversation.
If it can't, okay? Then I have the feeling that the board. Um, is at this point feeling negatively about a variance. So if the. Um, assessors came back and said, no, it's not living space. Then. They would, uh, there would be a denial of the variance, I'm assuming, okay, that's, there's been no vote taken, just. Um, discussion. But if they came back and said. Yeah, that's living space. And by the way, you're gonna be paying taxes on it. Um, as living space, then I think that um. They wouldn't need the variance.
Exactly, so we if if we approve the special permit, which I have zero objection to. But if we approved the special permit and continue the hearing for the variance. If the living space upstairs in the uh over the existing garage. Is in becomes included by the assessor, then they simply withdraw. Their request for a variance, and they go on with life. If it, the assessor doesn't do that, then they come back, we continue the hearing, we open it back up again, and. If we deny it, that if we deny the variance, then they're in the same boat they're in right now, if we would deny it. They'd have to redesign their apartment to get it under the thirty-five percent.
But do you see the point I'm making, Jim? I don't want to drag them out, okay? And if the board feels it would consider. A variance, whether or not. They develop additional living space in the main house. Fine, okay? Either way, the variance is either going to be. At this point, turned down, or I don't see the variance being approved, okay?
Well, and then we we could do that as well, we could shoot down the variance, deny the variance, approve the special permit. And if the assessor. Includes the square footage over the garage, then they don't have an issue. They can go about their their plan as it is. If the assessor doesn't, then they would have to redesign and come back to get under the thirty-five percent and resubmit that to Rich.
That's my thought, how do the rest of you feel?
I just wonder, can they make a walkway from the house to the garage? And then it's attached.
A hundred and fifty foot walkway?
That's why I asked how far they were.
That would be the world's largest deck.
What's considered attached, I mean, is it, does it have to be a wooden structure?
Well, the de- definition of a of a uh an att- of an in-law is that it's all within one structure, and it still looks like it's a uh. A single family dwelling.
Okay.
So so if you're thinking like a clothesline, or or you're.
A zip line, Richard.
A zip line, yeah.
Some, right? Could that be considered attached?
Yeah, there. No.
Okay, that was.
The only time we've had a question about attachment like that was when there was a breezeway between. You know, that really wasn't living space, but that's for another time. Danny, where is your head at?
I don't know yet, it's just a tough one. Knowing the area. They're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. There's hardly enough room to drive a truck down there to pile snow, and. That's just the neighborhood.
Yeah, it was a family neighborhood, so all the houses are pretty densely populated amongst each other.
Yeah, I mean, and and I I don't think anyone here wants to deny the in-law, but I think what everyone wants to do is. Protect themselves from. A real estate attorney that comes in with a larger house and. Wants to point to this as a precedent.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised when I was reading through it, that it was like a percentage versus a square footage maximum. in the, in the zoning law. Because they need expensive house, four thousand square foot houses now, you know?
Well, in the future, that, that might change, hopefully. That's what Susanna was saying, is obviously there's some loopholes in the bylaw that make all of our world very difficult. And, and vice versa. I mean, clearly, it, it wasn't intended to punish folks like you, so.
Yeah, and when we, when the garage, when we pulled the permit for the garage, um, I don't know if, I don't remember if we looked at making it bigger at one point, but we were told we couldn't anyways because it had to be smaller than the existing house. The square footage had to be smaller than the existing house square footage.
Ginny, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share?
Um, I do. With the plan that we have before us, how many square feet is it exactly? Or a percentage, I should say, is it forty percent of what they presently have?
It's body point something, I did the math. Body point two or something like that.
And, I mean, would it be difficult to, to back it to the thirty-five percent? I mean, how much?
It just makes it significantly smaller. It's, it's six hundred and forty-eight square feet versus, I think, um, seven sixty-eight.
Yeah. Ginny, it's a hundred twenty square feet, so approximately ten foot by twelve foot.
And where it's a slab, we have to put the, the mechanical room down there, so that's probably a eight by ten, ten by ten space too.
Yeah, well, that is considerable, that's a room. A ten by twelve, which is unfortunate, but I, in all honesty, would, would like to risk, you know, continue with the thirty-five percent, that's how I feel as the law reads at this time.
Okay, hearing from all of the folks, my suggestion would be we can, you, I mean, everyone knows that there's limitations on, um, this detached accessory apartment. And one of the things is, um, we can do it uh, for five years. It requires, um, premises be, be used by the owner as a principal resident and have been used as a lawful resident for, for at least five years. Evidence verifying and writing and from the board of health and you submitted that. Um, there is no other in-law apartment or accessory apartment, you met, met that. The apartment shall not comprise more than thirty-five percent. The apartment shall have its own separate entrance. The apartment shall have its own kitchen facilities. The outside appearance of the premises will be that of a single family. Uh, the rooms shall, uh, heat, the rooms shall have heat. The number of residents of the apartment shall not exceed four. And the premises shall continue to be used as a principal residence by the owner. Um, I think most of, I, you know, I can't imagine that any of these aren't being met by the petitioner, except for the thirty-five percent. I think if we were to go to next month and, um, there's one of two things that are gonna happen. One, we're going to find that she doesn't need the, um, variance. Or from listening to you folks, and we haven't taken a vote, but that it would be denied if she can't. So I don't know why we would want to dangle that out there until next month. Um, I think that, um, we could authorize if someone wanted to make a motion the special permit for an accessory apartment not to exceed thirty-five percent. And then it would be left up to what happens with the assessors and the building inspector for them to meet, um, the square footage. How do you folks feel about that?
Well, we have to do something with the, the variance request as well, so we either have to, we either have to either disapprove it or continue it. If, um, if, well, we either have to approve it, disapprove it, or continue it. So we, we can't just ignore that. So I'll make a motion, we can vote on it and go from there. I will make a motion that we deny the variance, but approve the special permit with all of the standard requirements specified, uh, from the zoning bylaw.
And issue it for five years?
Correct.
Okay, and we have a motion by Jim and a second by Denny. Is there any further discussion on Jim's motion?
Do we need a final plan submitted at some point? Or is that just between the building inspector and the applicant?
Well, I can write into the decision if you wish, that a, um, final plan will be approved by the building inspector uh, that includes only thirty-five percent. How's that?
Okay.
And that still gets us the opportunity to talk to the assessors' office.
Correct.
Right, and not have to come back to us.
Okay.
Because the outcome is quite frankly gonna be the same. As far as the variance goes, I believe. So it's either we find more capacity within the house for living area, or we modify the size of the apartment.
Okay.
So we're going to grant this with all of the normal conditions. And you understand that the use is limited to certain folks, right?
Yes, correct.
And, um, that will all be written into the decision. Does anyone else on the board have anything they'd like to add? Ginny, do you?
I'm sorry, me?
Oh, I just saw like the green light go around you, so I didn't know if you had wanted to say something.
No, don't know where the green light came from.
Mr. Hanks, can you live with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and right in the decision, I'll put, um, make reference to the plan and say, uh, I'll have to be thoughtful with it, but in other words, it will have to be altered, it may have to be altered to meet the thirty-five percent. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Hi.
Ginny?
Hi.
Uh, Susanna?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Keith?
Well, I'm an associate, you don't, you have your votes, you don't need me.
Okay, if you
But I'm gonna be a nay.
Okay. Um, and I'm a, I, I'm a, uh, I. So, um, you know what you need to do, Ms. Graff?
Yes.
And, um, you need to work with the assessors and the building commissioner. Uh, if you want to keep the same size, it usually takes at least a couple of weeks for us to get this decision together. Number one, because I'm slow, and number two, because it needs to be signed by all of those folks that, um, are voting on it.
Yep.
And we did get a vote from everybody, including Ginny. I didn't skip over Ginny, did I?
Nope, you got her.
Okay. Well, she, you know, is the one without the screen up, so, you know, I, I could see myself skipping over her.
Lynn, did you do yourself?
I did.
Okay.
Um, so it will be a minimum of two weeks before, um, our decision goes to the town clerk. The town clerk will note when it's received. And it's twenty days after that, that there is a heal time.
And that's, that's for, for the special permit, for the?
For the special permit, yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, it's for anything, for a variance or a special permit, or a site plan. So, you know, anything done during that timeframe, after, after you receive the first copy of the, uh, decision. Um, it's twenty days in the town clerk's office. But people have a right to appeal. Not that you can't do anything, it's somewhat flexible. If someone were to appeal, I have no idea who. But if they were, that you would have to undo what you did.
Yep.
The next thing is, the permit doesn't take effect until you record it, registry of deeds.
Yep.
And, uh, that's up to you to record it in the registry of deeds and to, uh, give a copy of the filing to the town clerk.
Okay.
And, um, to Leanne, to our administrative assistant. Okay, so we have, um, a vote. And I think you folks were wise, because I don't think, um, Ms. Graff, I, you know, I know the position that you are in and but the bylaw of some kind of binds our hand, okay? We need to all decisions we make, particularly according to variances, are, um, they go with the land. So fifty years from now, this variance would still be in there. And it may or may not be effective. So we always consider the property while we appreciate that you've been here for some time and that you're a, um, involved member of the community, we appreciate that, but we still have to look to the land and to the bylaw. Okay, we have, um, resolved, I think, the issue of the special permit and the variance. Is there anything else before I request that we close the hearing?
Um, one question, I can, I can still go to the assessor's office and get that completed or started while we're waiting for the paperwork, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I'm sure Mr. Hanks will, um, be welcome to receive whatever you can, um, get them to do for you.
Okay.
But you just know that the decision is gonna say the plan that was submitted in the square footage to be used must be reduced to thirty-five percent, either by increasing the living area or um, by reducing the size of the addition.
Correct, yep, understood.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion in second. I'll take a roll call, cause we have to when we're on Zoom. Ginny?
I.
Jim?
Hi.
Keith? Susanna?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay, let's see what else is on the agenda here.
Well, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, we have, um, approval of past minutes, and I think we passed over the minutes for the
We have January tenth and February fourteenth. January meeting, um, we, I need votes from Lynn, Denny, Sue, and Ginny.
I'm sorry?
For the January tenth meeting?
Yeah.
Present were Lynn, Denny, Sue, and Ginny. To those who need to vote for January tenth.
Okay. So could I get, um, where did Ginny go? Oh, okay.
Denny, Sue, or Ginny?
I'm, I'm back.
Okay. Susanna, can you make a motion in regards to the minutes for January tenth?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, motion made in second, unless this further discussion, I'll take a roll call. Anyone who was not present at the January tenth meeting, uh, may vote present. Ginny?
I.
Susanna?
I.
Jenny?
Hi.
Uh, Jim?
Present.
Keith? Well, looks like we've lost him. And I'm an I. So we have the four votes we need. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve or correct the minutes of February fourteenth.
And that was, um, Lynn, Sue, Jim, and Keith.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call again, the present, um, can be used. Jim?
Hi.
Ginny?
I missed that meeting.
You're present, okay.
Okay, I'm a present.
Susanna?
I.
Jenny?
I think I'm an I.
No, you were, you'll have to vote present.
Present.
And Keith?
Keith was present, he can vote.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we have minutes. Do we have any financial issues to discuss, Danny?
Yes. I have a bill, a request from the town administrator to pay a bill for one zero seven Colvin Road. Review draft decision and repair opinion to Lynn Ryan regarding use variances, emails with L. Ryan regarding opinion.
And
So that wa- that was to get the, uh, that note from the lawyer.
Yeah, they've, they've changed things.
That, that was town council, and I questioned the, um, administrative for the town administrator as to why we were being billed for it, cause it was never paid by the individual board. And, um, she realized, excuse me, her error, and we do not have to pay that bill.
Okay.
I thought so, wow. That's a new one.
But is there anything else, Danny?
No, not that.
May I ask what the, the amount was they were charging our board? A hundred and seven?
Two hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Oh, wow. One ninety-four.
For a lawyer?
One hour?
That was for an email.
Oh. Okay. Okay.
One point four zero hours.
What is it, one point, what?
Four zero. Two hundred and ten dollars rate. So it was eighty-four dollars for the point four zero.
I thought this new town council was going to save us money.
I don't know.
Just saying.
I think they are.
Oh, good.
I think you'd be shocked at what we were paying before.
Oh, well, I'm glad to hear that.
Does anybody have, Leanne?
I want to let Jenny know that the reconciliations from the accounting department for July through February is in the ZBA box for you.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing is communications. Does anybody have any communications? Well, some of you heard me earlier before we started the meeting. But I had a email from Jay Tesh asking for thoughts on what's happening down the mall. And he suggested I attend his meeting last night. Unfortunately, he sent the note at quarter of four, and I didn't see it until after the fact. You didn't go, Susanna, did you?
I was at the energy committee meeting.
So I guess the neighbors on River Road are up in arms because of the things that are being allowed down at the mall. I don't think they're complaining about the school buses, but that's one thing that Jay brought up. And he brought up, they're still storing soil down there, trucking it in and out. And they had a circus down there, and I think that disturbed the neighbors. And they had some bouncy house stuff down there. So I said to him, well, I thought way back when they were gonna start getting revenue in the form of excise tax. And I thought that, that, you know, that was gonna be pursued. The last time we talked to them was when they came in for a special permit. And at the time, again, we went to town council for a decision as to who had authority. And the authority was the planning board, because this is an overlay district. The planning board considered it the underlying district. Town council said, no, it's an overlay district. So we had, I, I think most of you were there. We had to close the hearing, discontinued the hearing, give them their money back. And my understanding was they went on their merry way to the planning board. Well, about the soil, I said that would be the earth, well, what we used to call earth removal, it's the select board that deals with import and export of soil and possibly the conservation commission. Because if it produces any runoff. But finding out where all this soil comes from is under their purview. Oh, excuse me, as far as the circus and the bouncy houses or whatever, they had some kind of plastic play area for kids. My understanding is they got licenses from the select board to do that, so that's up to the select board if they're giving licenses, you know, temporary licenses for that. I did say to Jay, this is what happens when you don't follow through on something. Everybody was up in arms about the school buses. Well, they're back, they're stronger than ever. And when we had talked to them, if anyone else remembers, I'm trying to think of her name. The woman that represented the mall said that their contract was up with the bus companies. It was like in June or something, we met. Their bu, contract with the bus companies was up in September anyway. Well, it appears they renewed it because that was before COVID. So did I miss anything to mention to Jay, or is there something else that I should bring to his attention?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, like I said, they had applied for that special permit to bring in soils and whatnot that they wanted to store there for this pipeline or whatever it is that they're running, but that never ended up going through us, so you know. I, I don't know what input they were expecting from us, but-
Anybody have any thoughts they'd like to share?
Well, I have a, a question regarding the buses that have been parked there now. This will be the second year.
Oh, no.
And the law reads that any, any vehicle parked, and that would be Berlin, more than six months per year is entitled to pay that town excise tax. And do I understand they are not paying?
There are in excess of fifty buses down there. And I know that the comment was made that since two thousand twelve, they've been getting excise tax for, from NRT. But those NRT buses, I believe, are Berlin school buses. Also down there are buses from Marlboro, Westboro, Algonquin.
Okay.
And to the best of my knowledge, they're not paying excise tax.
I would think they-
Well, they're, they should be.
To the town where they're-
Where it's parked. That where it's stored is the town entitled to the excise tax, regardless of where their office is. So I can only assume that whoever is registering this vehicle, let's say they're in Westboro, that they're paying the town of Westboro excise tax on these buses. And that's not correct. It, on their applications, it is required that they give information where the vehicles are garaged, where they're parked, and they're physically in Berlin. And I think definitely this should be pursued. There's a lot of revenue being lost here.
Wasn't Chris Keith-
Dawson, Jane.
Yeah, wasn't Chris Keith gonna follow up on that?
Yeah, I, I, I believe she said she would. Okay, well-
Well, of course, we have a new assessor now.
Yes.
So-
Well, I'd be happy to make a call.
Yeah, those buses are parked there more than six months of the year.
Exactly, exactly.
And they, I don't understand why they wouldn't list Berlin as their garaging. Because quite honestly, it's a lot cheaper insurance-wise.
You're right.
In Berlin than it is in Boston or Worcester, okay?
Yeah.
But anyway.
And then, yeah, I think there's, that needs to be looked into. And I have one more thing. I did listen to the planning board, and they did discuss the issues of the circus happening. And just one thing that was not mentioned was that they're operating over the hours of their permit. In other words, they're staying open, and there's the noise factor. So just one little more thing to mention. Okay.
Well, thank you for attending. Did you hear anything else that you'd like to share with us that the planning board is working on?
Well, they discussed, no, a great deal about their plans for the cottage housing, or it's not called affordable, what are they calling it?
Workforce housing?
Yes, yeah. And there's one other thing on River Road. The twenty-nine acres. They are, they've been approached by a organization that has education for autistic adults. And it was quite interesting what they're thinking of doing. It would be, again, it's eighteen and older. The typical attendees would be around two hundred and fifty. And they went in great detail of how much this type of facility is needed. And they're also thinking of a retail. So the students would learn, the, the things that they mentioned were baking, restaurants, wood trade, woodworking. And that to go along with this educational facility would be a retail, retail stores. So that the students would be selling or serving such, things such as bakery items, crafts that they've made, so that they're looking into right now. So, and that's on River Road. It's on the same side as Boundless Adventures. Exactly, yes. So it would be a, a rather large project. A few neighbors are already voicing concern that live on River Road, and the traffic, of course, is a factor. So that's interesting. It's, it's in the, it's in the works, or they're going to pursue it. They think it's a perfect location for facilities such as this.
So, so they're talking about putting this facility in Worcester Standin-Grabble?
Mm-hmm.
Which, which is also where they're looking at putting the workforce housing.
I believe that is not going forward at this time. I could be mistaken.
That doesn't surprise me. That doesn't surprise me. They've had a lot of problems with trying to figure out how to afford to build workforce housing over there that the, the last meeting that I went to with, I think Sue was also at that meeting, but I mean, they were talking about building workforce housing, but the units were, were gonna be selling it five hundred thousand dollars apiece, which seems to me to be well above what workforce housing, the whole intent is, so-
Yes, agreed, agreed.
Plus, plus condo fees.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Hey, folks, I didn't realize the meeting was gonna go so late tonight, and I have to get running to go pick up someone, so sorry, I'm gonna cut out now. Good to see everybody, we'll-
Well, thank you, Keith.
Night, Keith.
Night, Keith.
Bye.
Do we want to adjourn the meeting, or are we still meeting?
Sure, let's adjourn the meeting.
We need to discuss next month's meeting, and I have a request.
Oh, okay.
Next month's meeting would be April tenth, and I may or may not be able to attend, so I need somebody else to take the responsibility of opening the meeting in case I'm not here.
That won't be me.
I can do it if, we're gonna start at seven? Do we have anything scheduled?
We don't have any hearings unless something comes in tonight, so it would be starting at seven with no worry of a, a hearing.
Okay. Okay, I will check in with you to make sure I still have all the current login information.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Would you like a backup, Susanna? Would you like Jim to participate also?
Look at his face. I wouldn't, I would, I would love a backup. I don't know if Jim would love to do it. The look on his face made me think, no?
I can certainly be a backup, but I'll have to be educated on the process here.
I think that would be well, that, you know, people sometimes lose electricity or have, you know, and it's bad enough if it were, if it were to be one of the memberships, but if it were to be Susanna, then, you know, the whole meeting would be lost. Not that it's gonna last very long or whatever. But yeah, could you do that, Leanne? Could you instruct Jim and refresh Susanna's memory about doing these things?
Absolutely.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Oh, I think that's interesting that the we're adjourned, aren't we?
No. We need a motion.
Would you care to make a motion so that those that may want to leave can feel easy to leave?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jim and Ginny. Any discussion? If not, Denny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.